The August twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Riverbank Planning Commission Meeting is now open. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Joan Stewart.
Here.
Vice Chair Tadue Zamora.
Here.
Commissioner John Dynan. Commissioner Sid Alterman.
Here.
In the audience, we have our alternates Steve Link and Ben Rubin.
And Commissioner Bossos here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Exactly.
I just get right over you and Natasha Bossos is here.
Conflict of interest, any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
As I mentioned, I have a conflict with item four point one.
Thank you. Public comments, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, or as stated by the presiding officer, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the planning commission members. Number two, the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission board unless requested by an individual planning commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the planning commission board. We have item two point one, posting of the agenda, item two point two, approval of the August twenty twenty four agenda, and item two point three, approval of the June eighteen twenty twenty four planning commission meeting minutes. May we have approval, please?
I believe we'll have to approve two point one and two point two separately because I can't approve two point three. I was absent.
That's fine.
So I approve two point one and two point two.
I thought you already, she was second, so you didn't you. So I'm just gonna do roll call. So Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan, Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bossos.
Yes. Item two point three.
The only ones that could vote on this will be Dynan and then also and then Zamora.
Rule of item two point three.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Since you all were absent, we're just gonna do Commissioner Dynan and Zamora.
Yes.
And then we have our alternates Steve Link and Ben Rubin can vote on that.
Thank you. Number three, we have a police and fire presentation. This is a presentation from Chief Ridenhour and Deputy Chief Clint Brayden Ray on illegal firework dangers and enforcement strategies.
Before, I was, I was just gonna, we skipped over.
On the consent calendar? I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, please. You have, you have a comment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Gary Pearson, a resident of Riverbank in District Three. I live at twenty-two oh nine Cedarwood Circle. First, I attended the Housing Element Workshop on July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. During this workshop, we heard from the contractor on the various elements of housing in the city of Riverbank. And I do understand we are in that sixth cycle of house element planning process, which will affect future housing. So, second, this workshop, in my opinion, was lightly attended by general public and was mostly city council, planning commission, and the contractor. The community members I heard spoke were one banker and one real estate agent. I did meet with a local resident from the downtown Riverbank and had a great discussion about what was going on downtown. I am very disappointed there will only be one workshop, which I confirmed with city staff today. I would strongly recommend a second workshop be planned so that additional community members can attend and comment in a timely manner. It appears to me that this workshop was poorly timed with minimal notice to the general public. Please note, I requested through the city clerk to be added to the notification via email, and I checked my email in multiple locations. I'm still having it from city clerk. Third, during the workshop, we were asked to categorize housing based upon current inventory of open spaces, lots, and related space. From my perspective, what was presented by the contractor, while informative, was a lot to synthesize and to prioritize, as we did through the exercise. Therefore, I would recommend further time be allocated so the general public can review and comment on the inventory of lots in and around and in the city of Riverbank. I am a proponent of having diverse group of housing and making sure there are adequate housing that is affordable, built well and sustainable in all aspects of construction. I strongly recommend that individuals and households with special needs like senior citizens and disabled persons, large families who need four, five, or more bedrooms in a dwelling, especially farm workers who move from one location to another, our homeless population, families with female heads of households who suffer a unique form of discrimination, be included specifically within the housing element report. When I listened to the contractor, I heard some of the elements of special needs, but want to make sure these are included in our housing categories. And fourth, and finally, I strongly recommend the city of Riverbank stay with its sphere of influence. Currently, the Riverwalk project is under the D E I R format, and there were significant public comments as well as local agency comments. I strong, I got one more sentence. I strongly discourage this commission to support the Riverwalk project as proposed. The Riverwalk project would remove, in my opinion, prime agglan, and I'm a farmer. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
My name is Jamie Eggers. I live at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto. That's outside the city of Riverbank, but within this proposed sphere of influence increase as per the Riverwalk project. I'd like to touch on that briefly, as well as the housing element issue. I don't know if you have looked at the comments that were submitted regarding the draft environmental impact report. There were over one hundred comments, which is a significant number. If you haven't looked at them, I would encourage you to do so. If you look at no other comments, I would encourage you to look at the comments submitted by a professional wildlife biologist, a PhD wildlife biologist, as well as City Modesto's comments. Many of the comments that were submitted spoke to the draft E I R as being unapprovable, so insufficient because there were so many gaps, and I think that is a very important thing for you to look at. With respect to the housing element, I am on the list to be notified of things going on in the city, agendas and so on. I received only two days' advance notice of the workshop on July thirty-first, so I'm concerned how well it was advertised and publicized. I had a conflict, so I couldn't attend, but the meeting was not available via Zoom. It was not video recorded, so there's no way to go back and see what was presented. And I would encourage the city to be both transparent and inclusive with something as important as the housing element, which becomes part of your general plan and ties to all future development that occurs during that eight-year planning cycle. So as Mr. Pearson stated, I would encourage you to have at least one more public meeting and advertise it thoroughly and make it accessible to the public via Zoom and so on. Thank you.
Do we have any, any more public comments? Thank you. We'll close up, and now we'll go on to the presentation.
Good evening. We went through our Fourth of July holiday this year, and one of the big things is always illegal fireworks. I kind of want to give a presentation on, on what that, that program looked like, the dangers of it, and what kind of enforcement strategies we use this year. So first, we talk about where are safe and sane. These are the fireworks that you buy at your local stands around town that support nonprofits. They're gonna have the state fire marshal seal on them showing that they're illegal. These things, when they, when they burn, they don't leave the ground. They don't find the air or explode, right? So they make like showers of, of fire. So next, I want to talk about the illegal fireworks. Unfortunately, these are very dangerous. People get hurt with injuries to their, through their body, their hands and others. But what's even more dangerous to our area is the fire danger. As you know, California is extremely dry, and the dangers that come out of these, as you're gonna see, is pretty dangerous. So again, if it leaves the ground or explodes, it's illegal. And you'll see in these pictures, these are pictures of mortars. For the most part, you'll see at the top, these are the ones they light and put in tubes, and they come in various sizes. These are very small ones. They go all the way up to numerous inches in, in size. One here. So here's another set of some that are illegal fireworks that have some of the mortars with the packaging still attached. Obviously, this looks illegal, right? Large pallets of this. And again, stuff you're buying from someone's trunk off of Facebook, that's not legal. These are a large seizure. But sometimes we forget about these little ones. These are also illegal, right? You have bottle rockets. They light, and they shoot in the air, and they explode. Again, there's still flame on the end of those when they land in dry grass. So with, I kind of want to talk about, and I was gonna have, pass it off to Clint Bray here, to talk about exactly what happened in our area during the Fourth of July from illegal fireworks. I mean, you guys all live in Riverbank. You probably saw the illegal fireworks. And then we'll talk a little bit about the enforcement we did this year and how that resulted in.
Good evening, Clint Bray, Deputy Chief from Stanislaus Consolidated. So I'll talk about MST first, which is a resource sharing agreement between us, City of Riverbank, Modesto, and Stanislaus, and Turlock. So when you have a fire in Riverbank, you don't always get a Riverbank engine, especially when that engine's busy. Our neighbors rely, we rely on them to help us. During the night of the Fourth of July, I was at our dispatch center from about 5:00 PM till 3:00 in the morning. During that period, from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM, we had over a hundred and sixteen fires we dispatched. At one point, we had fifteen fires holding with no fire engines available. For MST-wide, we had four structured fires with three of them required greater alarms. So on a structured fire response for us, we send a minimum of five fire engines and one truck company. And during that night, we had three of them, one of them went forth alarm the next morning. For the city of Riverbank, we had five fires with one of them requiring five engines over off of Brazil, requiring extensive overhaul and manpower tying those resources up not to be able to respond to any additional incident in the city or with our resource partners. At one point, we were holding fires for up to thirty minutes until we could free someone up to respond. So that was our Fourth of July. And we continue to see a trend where it continues to get worse and worse every year, with illegal fireworks being the cause of our responses.
So that kind of gives you an oversight of just how busy the fire department was that evening. And, and a lot of folks, you know, we put our campaigns out about illegal fireworks. We get a lot of negative feedback from people that like, why shouldn't we have our illegal, or legal fires, illegal fireworks? They wanted to launch. But this is the, the real danger. People actually lost their homes that evening because of this, this. So what you're gonna see here is, one of the strategies we, we used this year is with our, our air unit. So we have a high-quality camera on this. Obviously, this is at nighttime. So what you're gonna see is a short video. This is with a forward-looking infrared, so everything you see is black, is hot. But this is to demonstrate a mortar going in the air out of a court here in Riverbank, and you're gonna see it explode, and you'll see the hot embers actually landing on houses around you. It's kind of give you an idea of true aspect of what that looks like. And you see all that debris just kind of falling down and raining down. Well, that gets the grass, right? The dry grass, it causes fire, right? And this is just one little area. So this year, by using that, that helicopter, that's how we went out and actually identified a lot of this stuff, right? Because of this severe danger and to our community, the city of Riverbank adopted this campaign, right? To you light it, we ride it, right? A thousand-dollar violation for illegal fireworks, that's possession, use, or discharge of, right? And it's also not always against an individual. It's gonna be against the property owner. And the reason that is, is because it's very difficult to identify the actual individual. You know, this is nighttime. It's dark. It's hard to see. There's a lot of people moving out in the streets. There's large parties. And when, knowing for myself firsthand, going out and try to identify somebody, individual, you get up there, they ran in the house. They ran somewhere. You don't know exactly who it is. But we know which residency came from. Especially with the helicopter, we were able to see the fireworks being launched. Someone go out, light it, go back to a resident for a large party in the front yard, and go indoors. And this is the, obviously, a picture of our helicopter. If you haven't seen it, they actually, the camera's on the front of it, on the nose, and that camera is so sophisticated that we can actually type in an address. And as you type in the address, it comes up on the screen, and immediately zooms to that, at that location, and zooms into it, and will hold that position until it arrives, and it'll stay steady on it. And it'll, it'll put an overlay on the street. So it'll say what street name it is, what the partial numbers are, all those kinds of things. And then what we did afterwards is we had our deputy go back and then take that information, review it to make sure it's accurate. Then he would correspond the addresses that he saw on the map overlay with Google Maps and Google Earth, confirm that is the right address from the streets. So the way we issued the citations this year is, again, people know this is illegal, so they try to hide from us. When we first started this, this campaign off, it was fairly, I say fairly easy, it was still difficult, but catching violators. But then pretty soon, they started being very sneaky, right? They would run away, hide them on corners, launch them for their backyards where you couldn't really tell which house it was coming from. Again, I mentioned how difficult it is to identify a specific person. So that's why we, again, we tried mostly, if we could identify somebody, great. But mostly, it's after the property owner and their responsibility to identify who it is. I can tell you this year that we issued over nineteen violations. We had several people reach back out to us and say, it wasn't me. We had our deputy go to the house, show them the video, and they changed their mind. So it's pretty obvious. So if we do get any appeals this year, if that does happen, right, we'll be happy to bring that video to the appeals hearing and play it. People that would appeal would have already seen it already, so it would be their very first time seeing it. And we'll also have a deputy that reviewed all of it be here as well to talk about it, what that may look like. So again, the citations are mailed to the property owners in most cases. I think we did have a couple that were renters, but they had the opportunity to have the, the renter assume their responsibility if they in fact did it. And I think that was taken care of in any cases like that. So with that, we always put up our non-emergency dispatch number at two oh nine five five two two four seven two number. That's obviously report legal fireworks or any non-emergency activity to law enforcement in our community. So with that, I bring it back to you guys if you have any questions. Yes, sir. So the issue with the body camera footage actually is, it's actually not good. And the reason why I'll tell you is because when you activate the body camera, it's at this level, looking from chest view, and it's in the dark, and you're looking at a ground level like this, right? So even if it was available, it's very difficult to actually see anything. You're not gonna be able to see down the street. It's like a general overview of this. It's not like zoomed in on something that's far away. Right? So typically, when our guys are doing it on the street, they'll be sitting in their cars, trying to be covert as much as possible. But people quickly figure out, why is this car parked down the street? Then they realize it's probably law enforcement looking for them. So they would light something, we'd get out, hit the body camera, but that activity's already happened. So now it's not captured on the camera. So that, that's why that was ineffective.
How long do the individuals who receive a citation have to file an appeal?
Thirty days. Yeah, most of the citations were, I believe it ends this week for any appeals.
How many since chief? How many appeals have come in?
I believe there may be one appeal. Yeah. So a lot better than previous years. A lot of people came and reached out ahead of time with the idea that they were going to appeal. But again, just being fully transparent, we're like, we just actually had someone actually go meet with them and say, hey, here's the video that we had from this year. And most, almost all the cases, people were saying, thank you. Yeah.
I got a question. First of all, I can only imagine that the double whammy between law enforcement and fire protection on that night is, you know, throughout the county, pretty, pretty severe. I know there's several counties in California where fireworks in general are just outlawed outright, other than like, you know, the formal displays, you know, Disneyland-style fireworks and that. Is that something that's ever been put on the table here in Stanislaus County? Or, you know, I mean, is there any talk about that? I, I know a lot of people that have like, like pets or other things that just that noise is traumatic to them and, you know.
I, I believe our largest challenge is a lot of community service groups use that as a major fundraiser. And by taking that away from them, then takes money out of their pocket. So that's kind of more, we're trying to steer people towards that, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking that if, I mean, if they're illegal outright, then anybody lighting them off, you know, you don't have to go through and say, well, wait, were they doing stuff that came from the stand? Or was this something, a mortar, whatever? So but no, we do appreciate all that you do, especially on that night. That's, it can't be fun.
Thank you both very much.
You.
Mission public hearings. Item four point one, the architectural and site plan review zero, zero four dash twenty twenty-four, Countryside Three, California Avenue and Central Avenue.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, Chair. Michael Arroyo, contract planner with the city of Riverbank. Associate planner with J B Anderson Land Use Planning. So before you this evening, for your consideration is architecture site plan review, ASPR oh four twenty twenty-four for Countryside Three, so the third phase of Countryside. So this map shows not only the, the subject project and the subject property, but also the, the previous projects, Countryside One and Two, but the focus of our meeting this evening is the red rectangle at the lower, at the bottom, project site, Countryside Three. The project itself consists of the review, the architecture, architecture design review, or the twenty-two single-family residential dwelling units. As this map shows, the project site is located east of Claus Road and bounded by Kentucky Avenue, Central Avenue, and Companion Lane. So for some background on the project, the project, the property is, has a general plan, general plan land use designation of low-density residential. And the property itself was rezoned previously from single-family residential R R one to planned development. So just a little note on planned developments, the purpose of a planned development zone is to encourage innovative design, but also retain good land use relationships with the adjoining properties. Also, the intent of a planned development zone is to facilitate variations and deviations from the Riverbank Municipal Code's development standards for the established zoning district. So for this one, it was R one. The, the caveat with planned development zones is that the proposed planned development, it must demonstrate that the proposed standards of development are superior or would produce a superior environment than what would be established had it remained an R one zone. But for, for our, the purposes of our meeting this evening, that's just background. So those things have already been accomplished. So obviously, it's been rezoned to PD. But with P planned developments, there's sort of an exchange because it's not a, you know, it's not, it's not a guarantee that it can be rezoned to planned development. So the, the developer, who is not here this evening, in sort of in exchange to have that ability to be rezoned to PD, they've proposed to upgrade or offered to upgrade the garage doors, decorative outdoor lighting, and also enhanced landscaping. So we'll look at those through the elevations that you'll see here. So this map is the best tentative subdivision map that was approved in twenty twenty-three for the twenty-two single-family residential lots, and also Lot A, the storm, which will serve as the storm drain basin. So here are the, the elevations for this project. There, again, there's only twenty-two single-family residential dwelling units. There are four models, and each model has three individual elevations. There are twelve different color schemes to choose from. So twenty-two units, you can see that by default that there will be diversity, not only in design, but layout, orientation, et cetera, design, color scheme, et cetera. So this is the P tree. This is the smallest of the four models. At the top right, you can see that this one is one thousand seven hundred and forty-two square feet. So this is the Petri. This is the smallest of the four models. At the top right, you can see that this one is one thousand seven hundred and forty-two square feet. Uh, all four models will have a great room and a two-car garage, but this one will offer three bedrooms, two baths. The next one is the Grapevine, a little bit marginally bigger, uh, three bedrooms, three bath, eighteen sixty-eight square feet. Uh, obviously, the three elevations shown there, and again, a great room and a two-car garage. The third, and they obviously get progressively bigger, uh, this one, the Orange Blossom, is two thousand one hundred and five square feet, the three elevations there, and four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath combination. And then finally, the Willow Tree is the largest. It's twenty-one eighteen square feet, four-bed, three-bath, and the elevation's shown there. And so, uh, the, the, the review and of architecture design is not, is not, uh, subject to CEQA. It's not considered, um, a project, so we don't have to worry about that. So the recommendation by staff is to approve the Architecture and Site Plan Review, subject to the conditions found in, uh, the conditions of approval found in the resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four for Countryside Three. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Any questions?
Curiosity question. Have they said pricing for these yet?
Um, I, I'm uncertain about that. Josh, I don't know if you.
I don't believe so they have. And, uh, I noticed the home builder, the developer's not here tonight to answer that, so at this point, I'm unsure.
Comment. Do we have any comments? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Do we have a motion?
Approve resol, approval of resolution two zero two four dash zero zero four.
I have a second.
I'll, I'll second.
We will call, um, Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Dinan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bosso.
Yes.
And, um, Commissioner, um, Altman is abstained from this voting, so it's approved four oh.
Thank you. Planning Commission comments. Nobody has any comments? Okay.
I just want to say welcome back, Jim.
We missed you. County referral correspondence.
Evening commissioners. Um, item six point one, this is a letter we received, uh, I think it was last month, from, uh, Modesto City School District, just, um, identifying that their impact fees for residential, like, I believe it's also applies to commercial has increased. Um, so it's something to be aware of because that does ultimately factor into the, uh, the, the price of a new home, you know, um. So just, uh, more for, for your information to be aware that the fees have been raised. Thank you.
Okay. Staff comments.
Evening again. Um, I have a couple of comments. I'm gonna go through, um, some recent city council actions that have taken place, uh, the, the previous, uh, since we last met, the previous city council meetings. Couple items I wanted to point out. First of all, I, I had mentioned, um, the cannabis ordinance amendment that we were processing. So that went through and had its first reading. I believe the second reading is next week, and then it would become effective thirty days after that. Um, and if you remember, uh, this amendment, uh, addressed some of the appeals process and fines and whatnot, some of the issues we've had in the past with that ordinance. So, um, hopefully that goes through and it is in place for any future penalties we, we issue. Um, also, just kind of, uh, a project I wanted to bring your attention to, um, Development Service Project, um, Development Services, uh, Department had a project that installed a raised crosswalk along, um, Crossroads Elementary School in front of there. So just something to mention, um, in case you're in the area, you may notice that. Um, also, in terms of upcoming city council meetings, um, on the twenty-seventh, which is a week from tonight, we'll have, um, the first reading of a massage ordinance, and this is to address, uh, massage establishments, and, um, it's a pretty thorough update, uh, to bring it in line with state law. Um, also, we'll have, uh, similar, uh, to what we heard tonight for Countryside Three, they're going through and doing a subdivision improvement agreement amendment, and this is just to allow them the ability to bond for unfinished improvements, something that wasn't, um, allowed in their previous agreement with the city council. Um, and then, like I mentioned, we have the second reading of the cannabis ordinance as well next week. Um, in terms of, of your commission and items that you'll see at the next meeting, uh, which is September seventeenth, it's gonna be kind of a full meeting. We'll have a, a parcel map and exception application on Turpin Avenue. This is a single-family residential zone. It's fairly straightforward, uh, subdivision, but it is, it does include a flag lot, so that is, uh, the reason for the exception request. Um, in addition, we'll have the Heritage Two subdivision. If you're familiar with Heritage One, um, Heritage Two will just be an extension of that subdivision. Um, that will include a general plan amendment, a rezone, a tentative map, and I believe we have the architecture to include, um, in that action as well. Also, kind of hitting on what, uh, the police and fire chief mentioned, we may have a fireworks appeal. Um, so just keep that in mind. We, we may see that. Uh, I'm not sure it's official yet, but if we do, um, it will be at the next meeting. Um, and then lastly, kind of the big item of that meeting will be the housing element. So we'll be reviewing, uh, the draft housing element, um, prior to the city council reviewing it. And so, um, those four items are, are kind of on the agenda for next month.
I just wanted to add on the Heritage Two. This was previously gonna be the RV Storage Center that you guys so is originally residential, and then they switched it to commercial, and so they're not doing the RV center now. So now it's going back, so.
Lose my remarks. Thank you.
That's it. Nobody has anything else? Meeting's adjourned.